Okay, we're obviously starting a moment late. If you would. Tell me in order if you'd join us as a pledge of allegiance led by Councilwoman Breard Watson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Councilwoman Breard Watson, it was wonderful the way you led us. Would you like to start off in Councilman Reports?
Ah, chefs, thank you. Um.
Being recorded, remember?
I know. Um, so the first thing I'd like to do is compliment the city staff on the job they did for the state of the city. Presentation was absolutely wonderful. Again, um, I have not had a single negative response from anyone, and I've had people actually call me and email me to tell me what how good it was. So, thank you very much for the effort that you the staff put in. They did a great job. Um, I'd like to also share that I was at the most recent Southwest Valley Chamber of Commerce meeting, uh, board meeting, and there's a lot of stuff going on in the West Valley. It's really an exciting time to be in the West Valley. Avondale and Goodyear, I always feel like we're the little brother, but we we have a different market and we are small by design. I like to think of it that way. But there's a lot of exciting stuff coming and happening. Um, I also had the opportunity to attend meeting yesterday on the Hilltop with the Heritage Center, the farm and ranch people, probably and may have comments about it as well. But again, it's good to see progress happening on our motion there. And finally, uh, the State Historic Preservation Organization, known as SHIPO. Um, and yes, with Michael, you have to be very careful how you say that. Met with us and was giving us some really good guidance on how we can become a city that is eligible for some of the funding, grants, things like that as a historical city. And so lots of good things to look at there. So, interesting, exciting time to be in Litchfield.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Roman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would only make a comment on the, uh, State of the City evening that was, uh, was really well done. I want to thank all the, all the people from the city that that were involved in that. Uh, I think that the, the, uh, church did a nice job. It's it's a nice venue for for meetings like that. And it worked out real well. The only thing that I had from the, from the church was that all the trash was bagged up, just nobody took it out to the dumpster. So, something that even I can talk about.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Roman.
Um, I will concur what Lisa said about SHIPO. That's exciting for the public side of it. I am just on the Westmark Board, which is not developing in all the West Side, and that's.
Exciting as well. It's really fun to hear about everything that's happening everywhere. So, we are a piece of that as well. Um, State of the City, I two citizens said to me they actually left the meeting excited. How about that? I'm like, that's a good comment. Um, and these are long-term citizens as well. Um, anyway, then the other is that been talking to Matthew and Tricia and I think Pat McCoy about citizens that contacted me and I kind of agree with them. They're trying to troubleshoot how we could have our rec center courts and basketball courts open on Sundays and on holiday. So, you know, grandkids that came to visit and they went down there and I know that the office is not manned, but um, I think we're talking about troubleshooting. I don't know if our, our Avondale Spinek could be the ones to open it and close it on those days or park their cars, you know, there. It's front and center. And I don't think we have any kids jumping the fence to come in now because they'll get caught. It's front and center in our town. But I do think it's a rec facility and it would be awesome, or public facility would be awesome to be available those times. So, just throwing that out there that I'm happy to help troubleshoot anyway.
Thank you. Councilman Jim has no. All right. Well, Councilman Claire, we got here on the TV.
Sorry about that. Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. The, uh, State of the City was attended by twice as many people as we've ever had ever before. Uh, if you change the day of the week, change the time, uh, you change the location, you added food. Something worked. Your job, I guess, is to figure out what that was and and make sure it happens every week again. So, I mean, it was, it was extremely well done and very well attended. And as I've said, the comments have been fantastic. And the mayor did a great job, too.
Actually, Mayor, I have one more thing. I do think it's funny that there are only two people that that put forth a thing to speak at the State of the City, and one of them was, who did the food? That was pretty good. That was a pretty good meeting when no one's complaining and they're asking who did the food, which was fabulous, by the way.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Well, I will hang on with all the comments about the State of the City. The staff did a great job. It was, uh, it was staff's concept that we needed to change it from Saturday morning and go to an evening meeting, uh, for a variety of reasons. Go to the video and some things that were different this year than what it's been in the past. So, overall, it was a, it was a very good effort on part of the staff, and you should please thank them, each of them that was involved in it because they did a great job. Uh, and that's, really, that's all I have. That's all I have to report. So, if that will go to the city managers, now, this is the city manager annual report.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, we want to take, we take the issue of appointment concerning the city attorney out of order. What do you think it would be best to put, to take it here before we do this annual report and all these other presentations are ruled until we get through all them and do it? I would say it'd be better just to get it done that.
I agree, sir.
Okay, so we're gonna take item, I think it's. It's item ten E. Let's take item ten E out of order, which is consideration of the letter of engagement with Pierce Coleman. Mr. City Manager gives the presentation.
Um, Mr. Mayor, this is discussable than anything. Uh, many council, you remember last month their city attorney, uh, Joe Estes did let us know that he was gonna be leaving Gus Rosenfeld to join the firm of Pierce Coleman. Since that time, he has done that. He did start with Pierce Coleman on February first. And for that reason, you do see that we have two firms represented here tonight. We have Joe here as now with Pierce Coleman. And of course, we have John Austin here beside me. John Austin is still with Gus Rosenfeld, as he has been. This is, of course, is a change, and you will see, of course, our staff's recommendation is to continue to move, to move our business, to have Joe Estes continue as the city attorney, but with Pierce Coleman. But however, also keep the contract open with Gus Rosenfeld, so we can use them for various issues as well. For example, currently, Austin has been working with me for some time, I don't know, at least a year at this point, on the Sun Health Agreement. It would make sense to keep working on that agreement with him for obvious reasons versus trying to catch Joe up on that. There's also issues, of course, that we work with Joe separately. So, again, for those reasons, I would like to keep both, both of those open at the city manager's discretion, so we could send which business officer to go to which attorney, certainly open to council suggestion, recommendation, all that. But I, I think that's the best thing. And that, um, we go with Joe. And again, that's why we have both attorneys here. And I would like to say that both these guys are, are friends again a long while. I talked to both of them today and before we get into as far as the Pierce letter of engagement that's in the, that's in your packet. Also, would you like to say anything as far as Gus goes?
I would. Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor members, if that's okay?
Yes, please.
So, so what I want to say first to start with is, you know, Joe's done a great job for you, and he will continue to do a great job for you however long he works for you in any capacity. He's a good lawyer, uh, Gus, you know, had a tough, and Mr. Mayor, you alluded to this last time, is that Gus had a tough shoe, big shoes to fill with Susan Goodwin and knew that they had to find someone good to do it. Joe's the person Gus found. I think it was a great choice. He's done a yeoman's effort, like, like you said. Um, and, and that, I think, is part of Gus' service to the city of Litchfield Park, is finding good people to come that can do your work and and that will care about the city. And I know Joe does. Um, I do, too. We're both invested in the work that you do, and so I hope you seriously consider Matthew's suggestion of having contracts with both firms. I think you'll, you'll have two pools of people who are invested in your success and will do a good job for you moving forward. Um, I, I think the one small part of that that I, and I bring up because I hope you will mention it in your motion, if you go that way is, you know, to give sort of some discretion to Matthew as far as which attorneys he's gonna call him for different things. I think that's the key to making it really actually work, having two law firms work for you. Now, all that said, I think that boils down to the question of who's gonna be your city attorney. Um, I, I am here from Gus to say that we have been honored to be your city attorney. We would be honored to continue to be your city attorney. Um, and it, but if you make that, if you make a different decision, that's okay, too. Uh, we will always be here for you. We will, uh, answer the phone if you need our help. We'll be happy to support, well, maybe not happen, but willing to support Joe. I'm just kidding. Joe and I, uh, work very well together. So, we'll be happy to support Joe. We'll be happy to do, you know, other things if Joe's, you know, not available or doesn't have the capacity. I'll hopefully still be here when Joe retires, so maybe you can, you know. So, anyway, what, the point is, and I, and I want it to be a little lighthearted, is we are here for you no matter what you decide. We hope that we can have the opportunity to be your city attorney, but if not, we hope that you'll keep a contract with us so we can collaborate with Joe and so we can just be here for you and, and help see through some of these projects. Not just the one Matthew mentioned, but, but a lot. We're really invested in what you're doing here. We like what you're doing here and we want to keep contributing one way or another. And regardless of what you decide, thank you very much for the opportunity we've had so far.
Well, I have a question, a question for you. So, last, at the last meeting, we, excuse me, we did talk about, about keeping both firms, you know, on an active contract, so we could use attorneys from both firms to do the work that we needed to be done for the city. And, and the question that I have is, is what? How is that? We, do we actually have an individual who is the, is, is something has a, has the title of city attorney, or do we have a firm? So, you know, how, how is that structured with the, within these agreements and how is it structured within the, you know, the statute of law that governs us at this point as a general law city?
So, Mr. Mayor, my understanding is that, at least with Gus, Gus, the firm, has been your city attorney and Joe has been our primary representative. Um, and I think in our letter of engagement, we designated Joe as being your primary contact, your primary point of reference, the person who's gonna provide, uh, service at the council meetings. And, uh, I, I believe, and in your packet, I think it says that they don't plan to change that, but Joe would definitely speak for that on his own. Um, I, I don't, I don't recall if, if the council, I believe the council did formally acknowledge that Joe was gonna be, you know, the, the lead representative at some point earlier in the representation. But, right, I mean, the idea is that Joe is the, the head of, of Gus and providing his service, and I'm assuming that that's the proposal, you know, if you do switch with Joe at a time.
Any other comments or questions from council? Yeah, yes. I didn't see the whole. Am I aiming at first or?
No, I'm pointing to you.
Okay. Yeah, she was pointing at you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Um, if Gus was selected, would you be the point man?
Mr. Vice Mayor, yes, I would, unless you objected. You know, um, we would, we would talk to you if you, if you weren't comfortable with that, but that was, that's, that's what we would be inclined to do.
The, the reason why I ask that is I have been impressed with you and your knowledge of the city events and what's going on, the status of everything we've been doing, when you've been sitting in that chair when Joe was, was not allowed. You had an extremely strong grasp of everything that was going on. Have you worked on a lot of this stuff in the background?
Mr. Vice Mayor, um, yes. Uh, Joe, Joe and I have, have worked very well together. Joe's been the, your, again, your lead attorney providing services, but sure, but it, it takes a number of attorneys, I think, to support you. Yes, I'm going from different, going from, and I don't mean that in a, you have lots of problems. I mean, different areas of expertise, different, uh, you know, capacities, things like that.
I'm struggling with this concept of switching. Uh, Susan Goodwin was our attorney for years. She merged her firm with Gus Rosenfeld. Uh, and she did that because she probably felt that was the best, the best fit for us, the best place for her to go. And because they have an extremely strong public representation, uh, including, uh, like, strong public finance bond attorneys. Fred Roosevelt did that for years. Um, they're a much larger firm. They've got a lot more resources to draw from. They've been around for over a hundred years. Um, yeah, Fred's not that old, but the firm's been around for, for over a hundred years. Uh, and, and I don't see that with the firm that Joe was going to. I mean, I don't see the resources. I don't see the, the, the strength that we have with Gus. And as I've mentioned, I've been, you know, when I've seen you sit there, I, I'm just actually shocked with the knowledge that you've had on the issues that we had going on within the city. And I was impressed with your approach and the answers that, that you gave, so. Uh, I, I will not support a change from Gus. I would support flipping this the other way, whereas Gus remains our general counsel and Joe takes a contract for special projects, uh, you know, basically just flipping the opposite of what's been, what's been presented to us now. But, uh, and this is nothing personal to Joe. Joe, Joe's, Joe's done a good job, and I told Joe this personally, that this is not a personal issue with, between me and Joe. Um, it, it's, it's, you know, Gus has been around a long time, and we've had a lot of attorneys that have come through, that sit in that chair over there. Uh, when we had Martines, Martinez, Curtis, Goodwin, whatever Susan's firm was, we had a lot of different attorneys sit there. Um, you know, with Gus, we've had a couple sit there, and I, and I I would be the most comfortable staying with Gus. I think there's a lot more power there, a lot more more stature, a lot more availability of resources, a lot more expertise, a stronger public representation department. Uh, it, it, it just seems to make the most sense to me.
The, uh, excuse me, I think the person that has the, the most ongoing contact with and relationship with the person who's performing the city attorney's, you know, job function is our city manager. So, I, I want to hear from the city manager. What, what is your recommendation?
So, I have worked with both Joe and, um, to me, I call him Austin. People call him John. I call him Austin. And I've worked with Austin as well. Um, both are knowledgeable attorneys. Both do a good job. Um, I will say there was a while there that, I'm trying to think of how to say this, where, um, where Austin filled in with Joe for a while due to some personal things that happened and did a good job, and he became, became very knowledgeable in a, in a hurry during that time. He's done a good job for us. Um, that being said, um, we work with Joe and Joe's, Joe's, does city very well also. I would also say that, um, just to be honest, Austin is about my age and Joe's got about fifteen years on me. So, he, he has more experience, more gray, more gray hairs on his head where Austin doesn't have any. Um, but, um, to be honest, just ba- based off experience, again, that, that's, that's nothing toward Austin. I would recommend that, that Joe be the city attorney, but then again, that we keep the contract open to use, to use Gus Rosenfeld on various issues. And not just Austin. For example, Andrew as well. Andrew knows CFD law very well. When we were getting the CFD in place, we did work with Andrew. And we use other firms, too, that you guys don't see. For example, on the, um, um, legislative law, that sort of thing. So, there's other firms as well that we use, not just these two that are sitting here. So, it wouldn't be uncommon for us to use other firms as well. Uh, that would be my recommendation there, council, again, is that we go with Pierce Coleman, make Joe the city attorney through Pierce Coleman. But again, to keep the contract open with Gus, to use them and for the city manager to have the discretion on which matters, went to which attorneys.
Any other questions, you promise, and council? Is there a, a motion to approve the letter of engagement with Pierce Coleman to utilize Joe Estes as city attorney, with city manager having discretion to utilize Pierce Coleman or Gus Rosenfeld when he believes it's in the best interest of the city?
No motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Motion.
I'm sorry?
Motion.
You want to make another motion?
Yes.
Okay.
It's in the rules.
Yeah, you can make, you want to make an amendment or you know the motion?
I made a motion that, uh, we keep Gus Rosenfeld as our current city attorney and have Joe as our special attorney.
Yeah. As, just as a matter of order, I'm not sure exactly that you can make another motion. There's a motion that's been made and seconded.
I can make a motion to amend this.
We should make a motion to amend.
Yes, and I'm amending it to fuck with the other one.
All right, so that's, you've made a motion to amend. The motion is on the floor to change the initial designation from Pierce Coleman to Gus Rosenfeld. Is there a second for that amendment? Okay. It's been seconded by Councilwoman Roman. Is there any discussion with council?
So now we're going on Vice Mayor's motion.
The, the motion that will, the, the motion that is now before, to an amendment to the original motion, that amendment, if it's adopted, then would you come, then not amended, then amendment would become the motion, and then it would be a vote on the motion. So, the first question is whether or not we want to, uh, adopt the amendment that was suggested by the Vice Mayor. Uh, basically having the, the designation of city, of city attorney stay with Gus and Pierce Coleman be hired on a as many basis. Can everybody understand what we're voting on? All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the amendment, please signify by saying nay.
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 So, I believe the nays have it five to two. Is that correct? You said, all right. So, the amendment, the amendment fails. So, now the motion is, is still before us to designate Pierce Coleman as the city attorney with Gus Rosenfeld being supporting him. And the city manager having the discretion to use whichever firm he believes is in the best interest of the city. Is there any further discussion on that motion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, I believe that motion passes, uh, six to one. So, we will, um, we've approved a lot of engagements, so I guess that takes care of it.
Can you take a jaw out of the seat?
Yeah, I would try.
I would try.
And I just want to make it clear, you're not getting double billed for tonight. I'm not billed for tonight regardless of how. I'm gonna. You're all. That's a crime.
Um, i- if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I know this is slightly out of order, but just, I, I want to say again, now that you've made the vote, I just want to appreciate the opportunity that we've had. We look forward to continuing working with you. We hope we do. Uh, and I hope I can continue working with Joe. He's gonna keep doing a great job for you like he has so far. So, you're, you're in good hands.
All right, thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, so then we'll go on to the city manager's annual report. Notice I said annual because it's only gonna be once a year.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, Mayor and Council, first I'm gonna hit on some things that were just in January, and then I'll get into the larger annual report. So, the reason we decided to start doing an annual report is looking back at this, about this time of year, every year, we get an annual report from Goodyear Fire and also Avondale PD. And it generally lines up to, to have the audit presentation in the month of February. So, basically, the discussion, we decided that we would start doing this every, every February to present to you a staff report, an annual report, a fire report, a police report, and hopefully the audit presentation as well. It's a, it's a good month to do these things in. So, here we are. So, look at these again, just some things from January. We're gonna forget the annual. You will, if you haven't seen, City Line is up and going again. Staff did a great job bringing that back. It is done digitally. There are hard copies available in City Hall if you'd like one, but we encourage our residents to sign up for City Line, where they can be on the email list, where they get it sent to them automatically. And you might remember, we did hard copies for years, and switching it over to a digital copy saves the city twelve thousand dollars a year. So, please, anyone that's not getting that, please encourage them to sign up for that where they can get on the City Line list. Also, the annual orange tree painting event is coming up with RPG. That'll be on March sixteenth and seventeenth. That's a great event if you'd like to participate in that, come and help paint the orange trees. That's a fun event to do, to be involved in. You are, remember, we did have a, a sober living home application was received in mid-January. That application has since been retracted. Staff received a complaint from residents who live in the village at Litchfield Park regarding increased parental traffic from Millennium High, particularly in the village. Uh, we met today with Avondale PD, Goodyear PD, school staff, et cetera, and discussed ways to rectify that. The problem is that many parents are picking up their kids there, and just to be honest, a lot of kids don't ride the bus anymore. They either drive or when picked up. And a lot of parents are parking actually in the neighborhoods, waiting to pick up their kids. And you can see the crowds of kids that are leaving Millennium High and walking to the village neighborhood, waiting to get picked up. So, talking about ways to do this, but it's hard to find a good solution for that without ways that affect residents negatively. That's not really their issue. For example, you could certainly do no parking from, say, seven to seven thirty and two to two thirty, whatever it may be. But if you live there, that means you can't park on the street during those times. So, staff is looking into this, try to find the best solution. Again, we met with both fire departments or both police departments on that issue. Also, we did attend the ACC meeting earlier this month regarding Liberty. Also, we did our fire hydrant testing. I am pleased to say that we tested seven hydrants using our own independent company. Liberty was involved, Goodyear Fire was involved. And all seven hydrants that we tested, tested at least fifty-six pounds. Granted, they were tested in early February. They will be tested again in July for obvious reasons. Um, one great thing that Commissioner Tovar did get for us at the ACC was it was put into writing that Liberty has to allow us to use our own company for testing. That will be at the city's dime, but Liberty will be involved in that, Goodyear Fire will be involved in that. But again, it will be our own independent testing company that will test them whenever we want to get them tested. I think that's great that was done. And certainly, we want to recognize Commissioner Tovar for all the, everything she did to try to go to bat for Litchfield Park. She really, really went out of her way to help us, and that should be recognized. Also, the, um, city charter, the final charter was voted on by the Freeholders on January eleventh. That election, of course, is coming up again on March twelfth. I don't know about you guys, but I received my ballot last Friday. And me and my wife both have voted, and we certainly hope that everyone votes in this election, and we'll see what happens. That's it for the January report. Moving into the larger annual report that you see on the screen, it is nine pages, of course. I'm not gonna read every point, but just hit on a few highlights. As we go through this, and again, this is the first time I've ever done this report for you. If there's other things you would like to see, things you'd like to see more detail on, please let me know. In twenty twenty-three, we issued a hundred and fifty-six building permits and did five hundred and eighty-six build inspections. Various projects such as the remodel of two hundred and ninety-five rooms at the Wigwam. Code enforcement did two hundred and thirty-five NOVs, but of that, of those two hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and nine of them were property cases. Fifty-eight were illegal parking cases, and sixty-eight were miscellaneous cases. And only one citation was issued. So, there was a lot done, obviously, between there and the final stage. Also, you may remember, we passed a short-term rental ordinance, and we actually now have twenty-nine short-term rentals registered to the city. Where just a couple years ago, they weren't registered with us at all. So, that's great. We have that as a matter of record. On CIP projects, the Vista Verde project was finished. We did more pavement replacement, the mill and overlay of Litchfield Road, the Stags Park project, and the downtown storm drain project. A lot of great CIPs. Completed zoning ordinances, the group home ordinance, screening of non-principal structures and wireless facilities was completed. Litchfield Square, of course, continues to move forward. As you all remember, GMP six was finalized in November, and we're looking forward to have our part of Litchfield Square done this fall. You may have seen the road that's being cut in beside City Hall, and the cotton scale was actually taken out this week. So, it's a, that's a big change. And for those of you that haven't seen it, that interest of City Hall is closed now. We're coming in on the east side. It's, it's making progress, and it's a lot of change. The city clerk's office was very involved in the charter city process. For those months, for best of those three months, we had two meetings per week to get through that. And again, we had the final charter city voted on January the eleventh. Public Works has been very busy this year with regular. Public Works has been very busy this year with regular maintenance, but they also put in cameras and badges at all city facilities. That's a big change from the past. For those of you that have ever had to stand outside the door and try to remember what the new code was. It's a great change. And it certainly makes City Hall safer. And we do appreciate that. We also remodeled the city court office. They'd been coming for a long time. This room itself was done this year. If you've heard it look like before, it's night and day difference from what it used to be. We're gonna be doing the finance office soon. We're looking forward to doing the lake project with the dock, also the restrooms at Stags Park. Moving into court for the year, we had two hundred and fifty-nine complaints filed, three hundred and seven violations filed. Of those three hundred and seven, forty-seven were criminal traffic violations, two hundred and thirty-four were civil traffic violations. Moving into recreation, recreation has always has a lot going on. They had a thousand and one swim lessons, two hundred and eighteen legardos in the preschool program. Fifty-seven kids were included in the preschool program, including, including mine. They love it. Um, youth sports goes well with almost eighteen hundred participants in the youth sports program, four hundred and thirty-nine tennis lessons. Special events, did their annual events. They also added movies in the park and the touch truck event, which are great if you, if you've been out and seen those. H R is doing a great job this year. We added, added a new H R director, Lisa, and we had a new city planner, also with John. And you will see with the H R department, we will have a blood drive coming up here soon in the parking lot. We also have a mobile dent, uh, desk plant that will be available. It's getting a lot of employees that are interested in that. It's seeing a lot of good activity and also we actually have the chili cook-off tomorrow. So we look forward to that. As far as new ordinances goes, the speeding ordinance for Camelback and Litchfield Road was in place and Avondale P D. will talk about that in just a minute, how well that is working. The spending limits ordinance, the truck R V and parking ordinance, and the group home ordinance. As we discussed, we changed state of the city. I think, I think that's been a great change. Uh, we sat for a hundred and had two hundred and fifty-eight in attendance. So it was a great event and staff put a lot of work into state of the city. You don't realize the level of work it takes to make an event go over that well. They did a great job. We also began a city internship program this last summer. We had a local student that was our intern and, and rotated from city department to department. He's doing great and we're working to line up another kid or another student for this next summer. And they're again, local students. We continue to work on the agreement with Son Help. We actually met with him earlier this week and we renewed the agreement for Aunt Mary's house. Some miscellaneous things, of course, as you know, the Stargate Thomas Agreement was finished last month. The installation of the lighted signs at the four-way stop and on the roundabout, the waste management contract, the dental parking agreement, and the beginning of the riot choice program. And as you know, the Liberty issues go forward. I covered a lot of ground. I welcome any questions if there are any.
Questions, Council?
The fire hydrant testing, so that was random. Liberty didn't know we were coming, right?
That's correct, ma'am.
Oh, okay. But they knew, they knew, they knew soon. I don't know. I'm just guessing, you know, not that I don't trust Liberty, but maybe they filled the hole.
They didn't know they were going to be tested soon, then it's true. They did not know which ones are at what time. And I think it's important to note that January will naturally have higher water pressure than July will because of usage. So again, we will be testing them again this summer when usage is back up and we'll see where we are at that time.
Questions, Mayor? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, good report. Thank you.
Thank you.
To go along with what Ann was just talking about, I, there was something about the, uh, the, uh, fire equipment that is called out to a project, you, you're sucking the water out of the hydrants instead of, um, enjoying their water pressure. Is that right?
Um, for those of you that aren't aware, what Councilwoman Romack is speaking about, um, Liberty had requested the Goodyear Fire, our Goodyear Fire Chief, actually, Chief Louie's here with us, to come and speak on this matter. And act, and actually what it was about was that Goodyear Fire can serve our fires adequately with Liberty pressure. But the reason they can serve our fires adequately is because it's Goodyear policy to roll two fire trucks at Litchfield Park. They automatically roll two pumper trucks to suck the water. Exactly is what you're saying. As I testified to the A C C, as someone that's worked in smaller cities before where you didn't have two trucks, where you had one, that would be a problem.
Yeah.
So the reason it's adequate here, in my opinion, is because Goodyear Fire has enough trucks and we're blessed to have that, but they shouldn't have to do that.
So we're helping to pay for that, though. That's part of, that's kind of what I'm getting at is there's, there's a, we, we have someone who wants to speak back here might know what he's talking about.
That would be a, that would really be a problem. Okay, you can come speak, but only if you don't know of what you see.
I'm accused of that frequently. Uh, good morning, uh, good morning. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Paul Louie's Fire Chief, Goodyear Fire Department. So, uh, on a reported structure fire or a fire, we actually roll three engines in a ladder truck. That's our standard response and also get two battalion chiefs assigned to that call. Uh, so that's a very standard response for us. Uh, regardless of we're in Litchfield Park, Goodyear, Avondale, wherever, that's what the system responds to any reported fire. Doesn't even have to be a fire, just as a reporter of fire.
Okay.
But, but our, our engines are set up as pumpers and, and so, you know, uh, they're able, if they have to pump the hydrant, they have the hydraulic ability to be able to increase the pressure of that very easily.
Okay. So does your equipment have a storage tank?
Yes.
That hydrant is dumping into and then you're sucking out of that?
Yeah, yeah. So there's a couple of different options. Uh, most of the trucks have five hundred gallons, um, on, on the trucks themselves. So the engineer can kind of choose to fill his reserve or he can pump past the reserve right to, uh, to the hose lines. But, uh, for the most part, just like, you know, I was for, for a while, we all have O C D. We want to make sure that our tank is nice and full, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Chief.
The House of Counsel.
I just, I'm, is there ever an opportunity or a situation where you think you would not roll with three?
So on, on a medical call, it's typically a single-engine response. But hazmat calls, um, reported structure fires, actual fires, we'll, we'll roll at least three engines and one ladder. But, uh, the, the value of the system is there are a lot of resources that surround us. So, uh, there's usually an argument that's not too far away.
Chief, you might, you might touch on the joint agreement between various fire departments, how that works, sir, as far as backup and fires?
Well, yeah, sure. So the, the automatic aid, uh, system has been in place since, um, nineteen seventy-six. So it turns fifty years, years old in a couple of years here, but, uh, started off with three agencies, Tempe, Glendale, and Phoenix. Uh, they all thought, well, why can't we just combine our resources instead of building fire stations across the street from each other? Since then, we've grown to thirty agencies, two dispatch centers, one in Mesa, one in Phoenix. Uh, we're dispatched out of the system in Phoenix. Um, it's the largest dispatch. Uh, they've dispatched, uh, well over seven hundred thousand calls for service in a year. Um, and so, uh, and any given day, uh, regardless of the time of day, there's about two hundred and eight engines that are available uh, throughout the, the valley. So essentially from Ponapah all the way out to, uh, Superstition Mountains. Uh, there's a considerable amount of resources that are available for us. And we'll just, they'll just keep coming until we tell them to stop. So it's, it's an amazing system.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Matthew, going back to the parking at Millennium pickup, that's an old problem. And I remember back in the day, my day, ten years plus now, where they even talked to Millennium about, can you delay the, I mean, have, have the parents show up at, you know, at this spot a little bit after everything, all the action and, and pick up then. I don't know if Millennium's part of, you, you're talking to Millennium as well?
Yes, ma'am, we are.
I think at one point, which I guess we probably said no to, they talked about making the Leppo Park to pick up for the parents and the kids would have to walk over there and, you know, but.
They're, they're parking there too.
What, they're parking there as well? But is it just for pickup? That's what I'm saying. If it's just pickup, there is party, there is parking there waiting to pick up their kids and then off they go?
That's right.
I mean.
But there's more parents than there is parking.
Oh, yeah.
It's for a short time, but for that short time every day in the morning and afternoon, it's at best crowded.
Yeah, and it's the same story here. Just less kids ride buses. Nobody rides buses anymore.
So much so that we have people that are having to ask cars to move so they can back out of the driveways.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. City Managers.
Thank you, sir.
So are we done with the annual report or are you?
Yes, sir, you are. You're done with me.
You're done, I'm done with you, okay. But I can go to response to call the communities. Uh, there is no response, uh, to the call, there's no response to speak on our, in our January seventeenth meeting. And there was no response necessary from the piece, the people who spoke at the state of the city. Uh, so it brings us to this meeting is called the community. It's an opportunity for a citizen to address the council on a non-agenda item. Uh, there's a form that needs to be filled out. I don't, we don't have any forms, correct? Is anybody who, is there anyone who's a citizen out there? I don't think so. Well, if you were a citizen, you could speak to us now. So we're gonna go on to our presentation section. Uh, fiscal year twenty-three audit presentation, Stephen Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's my pleasure to be here tonight. Uh, my name is Stephen Palmer. I'm a C P A and a partner with Hinton Burdick CPAs and advisors. And we recently completed the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three audit for the city of Litchfield Park. And I have the opportunity to address you tonight and let you know, um, how the audit went. If we can get it to work. There we go. Um, first of all, I would like to just congratulate the city. Um, they once again, this is for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, so this form was included with the twenty-twenty-three financial statements. But each year, um, after completing the audit and completing the financial statements, after we've completed our review, the financial statements go to the Government Finance Officers Association for another review. It's not as detailed as an audit. They review the financial statements to make sure that all the required elements are there and that there's, there's nothing lacking. And if they find the financial statements to be acceptable, they issue this achievement for excellence in financial reporting. I don't know how many years in a row the city has received this award now. Um, but they received it again in fiscal year twenty-two. So that's really, uh, a great accomplishment. Your finance staff is to be commended for that. I just wanted to point that out. Um, let's look at the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three audit. Uh, after we've completed all of our procedures and looked over the financial statements, um, we form opinions on the financial statements. And we express these opinions in these three reports, the first being the independent auditor's report. This is the main report included with the audit and financial statements. And I'm pleased to report that we issued an unmodified or a clean opinion, and that's what the city wants. That means that in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly, um, the city's financial position and the results of its operations for the year under audit. The second report that we issue is on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance. Um, I'm pleased to report there was only one item there that was required to be mentioned. And that's as we completed our audit procedures, we did note a few adjustments that needed to be made uh, for the financial statements to be fairly presented. They related mainly to the debt, um, refunding, uh, or the debt extinguishment and the issuance of new debt and various other smaller items. Um, auditing standards state that if we find significant adjustments, um, we're required to, to, uh, include that in our report. I would like to mention that most entities that I audit get this finding. Just because the financial statements are so involved and there's so much to report, it's really uncommon for us to conduct an audit and not find something that needs to be adjusted. Um, the last report that we issued is on the, the state legal compliance report. This is specifically on finance-related items that the state likes us to look at. Uh, the biggest one that you're probably most familiar with is compliance with spending HERF money, highway user revenue funds. Those funds that come into the city that have to be spent on roads. So we double check that to make sure that that's, um, done properly. And a few other things. Um, I'm pleased to report that we issued a clean opinion on that report as well. Let's look at the city's finances from the ten thousand foot level, if you will. I'm not going to go into great detail, but I would like to hit the highlights. Um, the net position or equity of the city was a little over fifty-seven million dollars at the end of the fiscal year. So if you're to take all the city's assets, subtract the liabilities, that residual amount was fifty-seven million. And over time, whether this number increases or decreases is a good indication of whether the financial health of the city is improving or deteriorating. And for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, net position increased by a little over fourteen million dollars. Very positive. Um, capital assets increased by about seventeen million. That's mainly due to the city center project. Um, there was also s- some significant projects done in, done in relation to storm drain and a few others. But most of those additions had to do with the city center project. Um, the long-term debt of the city at June thirtieth was about thirty-four million dollars and it's comprised of these individual items listed here. A little over two hundred thousand in compensated absences, about three point four million in the net pension liability, uh, twenty-nine million in bonds payable. And overall, the city's long-term debt increased by about eleven million dollars due to the issuances of the bonds related to the city center project. I think it's really interesting to look at trends over time. I think it gives a, a good indication of where the city's been and where the city may be headed. So this is a five-year trend for the general fund is it's the main operating fund of the city. Um, you can see that top line is the assets of the general fund, the bottom line are the liabilities. And that line that mirrors the assets and is just below the assets is the fund equity. You can see that there's a very positive trend in the general fund. Assets have increased from about nine point six million to twenty-seven million over the past five years, while liabilities have remained relatively stable. And here's the cash trend in the general fund. Again, very positive, increasing from about eight point five million to twenty-five and a half million in twenty-twenty-three. And here are the revenues of the general fund. Um, the top line represents the revenues, the bottom line represents the expenditures. However, I did exclude transfers to other funds that are included in expenditures in the financial statements. I took them out of this, this graph. Um, uh, in twenty-twenty-three, the general fund transferred seven and a half million dollars to other funds. You can see very positive trends there as well. So those are the main things I wanted to, um, present you with this night. Um, I want to thank your city staff for all the help they give us as we complete the audit. Um, and audit is a bit of a painful experience. We ask for a lot of documents and ask for a lot of questions. They're always so very good to provide the information we need and respond to our requests. And I just wanted to thank them tonight. And with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to fill them. And if you have any questions at any point during the year uh, that you would like to direct to me, there's my contact information and I'll be happy to, to discuss anything with you at any point during the year. So with that, any questions tonight?
Questions, your council?
Good job, Paige.
Good job.
Thank you for your report and thank you for your, you and your firm's effort on conducting the audit.
Thank you, Mayor.
We, uh, obviously depend upon you, know that Paige is doing a great job. So we, we, we're happy to, you know, able to tell us the cheers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr.
All right, we'll go on to the next agenda item, which is employee of the quarter. This, uh, this quarter, the employee of the quarter is Kyle Holmes. Kyle did a great job. Come, come on out. Hey Kyle, you're gonna get to see that this is actually my signature. As I've said to the council many, many times over these last, I don't know how many years, decades, I guess, Kyle has been voted by other employees of the city as the best, the best example of city employee and your work ethic and your ability to help others do their jobs. They all appreciate you and so we want to present you with a certificate. They all appreciate you and so we want to present you with a certificate of excellence, employee of the quarter. And most importantly, it's not, it comes with eight hours of time off. You work so hard to get a day off. Thank you. If you'd like to say anything, we will let it happen. Okay, thank you. All right, uh, next item is a proclamation concerning national school breakfast week. Uh, unfortunately Chef Ron from the school district is not going to be able to be with us tonight. We will get this proclamation to him. Uh, it's in your, it's in your packet. It recognizes the importance of school breakfast. And, uh, for all of the council, I know that there's an opportunity during this breakfast week, which is March fourth through March eighth, for anyone who would like to go and serve breakfast at the National School of School. Uh, it's a, it's a very rewarding experience and I encourage you to do that. So if anyone here is interested in, in serving breakfast, let me know and I'll make sure that, that Chef Ron puts your name and gets you down there on the line. So we appreciate everything that he does and what the school does to feed our, feed our kids. Next item is a reports, the report section, first report is from the Fire Department.
Back again. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Paul Louizzi, Fire Chief. Good year. Uh, so we'll be doing the January report. I'll kind of follow City Manager's lead and then, uh, follow that up with the annual report. Uh, so for January, we had eighty-four calls for service in, uh, Litchfield Park. Uh, eighty-seven percent of those were EMS-related calls, uh, seventeen at Las Cruces, uh, and then eight at Wolloma. Certainly Las Cruces, uh, does have a lot of calls, but they're actually improving. We've been talking to them over the last few months, so only two that were non-transported. Uh, everybody else was transported and then Wolloma, all of their patients, uh, were transported, uh, from those calls. And then of note, we actually had two hazmat calls, uh, for natural gas leaks. One was, uh, at a residence and then the second one actually was a construction, uh, incident that occurred in the middle of a street. So, uh, something like a crew hit a pipe. So, uh, we had our hazmat team out here and, and both of those were, were mitigated, uh, pretty quickly. Any questions at all on the January report?
Questions?
Okay, so I'll switch right over to the, the annual reports. Our first time doing this. Uh, we've probably been serving, uh, Litchfield Park since twenty-ten when we got onto contract with the city. So, uh, you know, we, we've been a very great partner and, and Litchfield Park has been a great partner for us. So, uh, in twenty-twenty-three, uh, we responded to eight hundred and seventy-six calls, um, for Litchfield Park. About eighty-five percent of those were EMS-related. And then we, uh, broke down all of the other categories there. In addition, uh, we help out with fire prevention, uh, services and also plan reviews for fire plan reviews. Uh, so you can see those listed, uh, there as well. So, um, again, very proud to be able to serve the city of Litchfield Park, uh, since twenty-ten. Do you have any questions on the annual?
Questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll just, we'll just, the comment that we want to, we want to thank you and your, all, all of the firefighters for the service that you provide our city, it is, it is, um, appreciated by all, all of our residents. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, you know, between, between you and Avondale Police, I've been here a long time and it, it just, it feels good that to know that we have that kind of protection, not only from you guys, but from you.
Yeah, and it actually feels good for us too. Uh, Avondale PD is a great partner for us and to have that level of professionalism that is protecting us as well on these calls is, is fabulous. So our guys really enjoy it. So, thank you.
Thanks for everything you do.
Okay, Avondale Police Department.
Yes.
Are you gonna hold that?
I brought my van.
This is the city manager, have you noticed?
Hey Kyle, you just got the, the mic.
Took the police officer to figure this out. Evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Counsel. I'm, uh, Jonathan Martin, Assistant Chief, Allen Police Department. Um, happy to be here tonight. I'll talk a little bit, just as the Chief Louizzi mentioned, on January's, uh, stats that we had. It was relatively quiet month, which is really good. We have a total of three hundred and twenty-eight calls for service. The majority of those calls were, uh, speed zone details, schools back in session after the holidays. Uh, we also had several traffic offenses and traffic stops. We're focusing on that specifically along Litchfield and Camelback Road area, so. Other than that, it was relatively quiet, which we liked here and, uh, we did have one burglary alarm that we responded to the Homestead, Wolloma Homestead, where the burglary alarm went off, officer responded. They didn't locate anybody there. They did see, uh, some of the damage. They located a gentleman out in the desert area, contacted him. He obviously said I wasn't there, so they used the cameras that Kyle and everybody's helped us use and they went back, monitored the cameras, found out it wasn't back to him. We recontacted him and were charged and so we'll be submitting charges to the city prosecutor and we're trespassing. So that was a good catch on that part. Any questions on the January stats?
Uh, curious, sir, you've been able to do some patrolling on Camelback late at, late at night, first thing, early in the morning?
Absolutely, sir. So I wanted to touch on that specifically for you. So for the month of January, we conducted a traffic enforcement detail along, uh, we had, along Litchfield Road and Camelback, which ranged from really, uh, Village on Camelback, all the way down to Dicer and then Litchfield and Missouri, uh, Camp, I'm sorry, on Litchfield to Missouri and Camelback area. We had a total of twenty-five traffic stops for the month of January. Forty-eight of those traffic stops were performed on Camelback, again, between Village Parkway and Dicer Road. We issued ten citations and thirty-eight warnings. We had two commercial trucks that we stopped issued citations to. Along Litchfield Road and, uh, Missouri, we had thirty, we had forty-three speed details that we've conducted. Thirty-seven of those details were given, were conducted in that area. We total, we had a total of thirty officer hours and fifteen minutes, uh, officers dedicated month of January just specifically to those target areas, enforcement, traffic. We didn't have, we hadn't, we didn't have one single engine braking that we identified and we witnessed out there, which is good to know. Again, we did, it, the, the numbers that show, we also conducted a, we have some covert boxes that we put out and they monitor traffic and speeds, uh, and, you know, monitored high-low speeds. So the, on, on Camelback Road and Village area, we have that out there and we had nine hundred and, or, I'm sorry, nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-five vehicles passed this location during the timeframe that we're capturing with supposed to speed limits thirty-five miles an hour. We had the, the average speed, uh, so we go off, like, so the, really the, the standard is eighty-five percentile is pretty much acceptable standard. Eighty-five percent of our percentile speed in those area, in that area was thirty-three miles an hour, which is two miles an hour lower. We did have, uh, maximum speed that we captured was forty-four miles an hour, which is speeding. It's not as fast as I thought it would be.
Yeah, I'm surprised.
Right. So again, the average speed was with the thirty, was with eighty-fifth percentile was thirty-three miles an hour. That's along Camelback and Village. Along Litchfield and Missouri, we captured three hundred and, again, that's thirty-five mile an hours on that area also. Captured three hundred and sixty-nine vehicles. The, the maximum speed in that area was thirty-six miles an hour. And, uh, eighty-fifth percentile, it's kind of skewed. It's nineteen miles an hour, but it's coming over the hill, so it's catching them slowing down. But again, uh, we believe the average speed is right, right in that thirteen, I'm sorry, thirty to thirty-three miles an hour speed. So again, we didn't have, uh, any semis doing engine braking that we identified and witnessed out there. We continue to monitor that. We're not stopping. Uh, we'll be out there every night, an officer that works in the pay barracks, the evening shifts, he'll be out there monitoring it and we'll go from there, so.
Right, thank you.
Absolutely. Any questions on that?
Questions?
I have a question about golf carts. Subject near and dear to my heart, um, uh, yeah, it must have been two weeks ago, three weeks, somewhere in there. I was driving down Wilton Boulevard at four, about four forty-five and a golf cart driven by two young men, one young man, was right in front of me. Actually, started off coming towards me and I actually flipped to you and chased them down because their driving was so bad. What was going on was there was a young man driving who was probably a senior in high school that age, um, standing on the running board. Next to the steering wheel was the second individual who's leaning off into the traffic as oncoming cars are coming by. And I pulled, went and followed them home with the hope of talking to an adult. Um, and I'm just wondering, are we? I mean, I knew you guys can't be everywhere at once, but are we ticketing and pursuing drivers of golf carts? I mean, my husband and I passed one that looked like it was being driven by a seven-year-old, no adult on board. You know, I, I just, they're not training wheels on cars.
I agree, ma'am. They are motor vehicles, so they're required to be licensed. You have to be, uh, of age sixteen to drive them on the roads. We not, we have not sighted any golf carts in the month of January. If I can get the stats, we're gonna see them the last time it, it. We have sighted a golf cart. We do monitor them all the time. The officers are aware of them. If there's a, someone that looks underage or there's no license on the back of the golf cart, we will stop them and cite them, educate them, take them home or do something. But we won't allow that to happen. So I encourage you, if you do see that, please call us so we can respond. I don't want to say don't follow them because I don't want something to happen to you. Just call us and let us go out there and do that. But sure, we will definitely keep, uh, continue to keep a better eye on it for golf carts. It's nice weather out now. I see everybody's out walking around and driving around, so.
There's a surprising number of them being driven by young adults at a dispensal school. So I know there's one that parks right over here where the kid drives it and parks and then walks to school or catches a ride somehow. But he leaves the golf cart here.
Okay.
So.
Well, we'll check on that because Oscar, he actually is assigned to the, the school area. You can look into that in the mornings and give him something to do.
Thank you. I just don't want to see a tragedy.
Absolutely.
And that's just begging to happen.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am.
The speed study. Village Parkway and Camelback. Two lane. And often it's extremely crowded. It'd be impossible to speed much. Does your statistics, somehow you can pull out when traffic is not almost bumper to bumper, when it's able to speed to get statistics to see what's happening when there's somebody else around?
So, yes, our, our, they, they capture every vehicle and then the vehicle speeds regardless. It's out there for twenty-four hours or however long we have it out there since day nine captures the speeds off a radar. So we capture speeds. We did have four hundred and twenty-eight speeders, but that, that's, that would be thirty-six miles an hour is what it captures. It doesn't give you a bump or anything like that. But again, so the average speed was twenty-nine and then the eighty-fifth percentile was thirty-three because that takes those, pretty much those outliers that are speeding at forty-four and does the that rapid, you know, geometry math for me and gives us those numbers, so.
Like, I, I, I guess what I'm trying to get at is it's two lanes. Most of the time, there's a lot of traffic and you can't speed. Do, do your statistics give you some times when there's not a lot of traffic and you can speed certain hours, a day or night, two o'clock in the morning maybe? Uh, and, and break it out. And I'm, I'm trying to get, to understand if that goes to four lanes, are we still gonna see thirty-three mile an hour speeds through there when people have the ability to drive a lot faster because nobody's in front of them?
I've been doing this a long time, Vice Mayor. I don't think it's gonna get any slower. But what I can't, what we, these statistics do, I can pull those stats and it'll, it'll give you the peak times and it'll give you, we break it down by hour. So it'll say, it'll show you, let's say at two in the morning, speeds, the average speed could have been fifteen miles an hour or it could have been fifty miles an hour, just not, well, not higher than that. The highest was forty-four. So that could have been the two in the morning, that's when someone was going forty-four miles an hour. As opposed when it's busy, like you mentioned, you can't go as fast, bumper to bumper. So I do have those number, our statistics I can pull, bring it to the next council and provide those for you, or I can, for Mr. Williams.
Yeah, my, my other question is, on Litchfield Road, Missouri to Camelback, I believe was one, was your other, your second example? You, you have the ability north of the, I don't know, the very, very northern boundary of that Frye Shopping Center to turn left onto Litchfield Road. You have the ability to come out of Sun Health and turn right onto Litchfield Road, coming into the park. And those people are not gonna be going, not gonna be able to pick up speed before they get to that traffic light for any consequence. Is there some way to figure out if that messes up your statistics? Can you, can you, can you look at just what's happening before you get to those intersections coming over that hill?
Yeah, we, we can move the covert box to specifically target that just south of that, is where you're referring to?
Yeah, I, it's, it's area, north of those two entrances.
Okay.
Uh, one off of Frye's and one on, off of Sun Health.
Okay, yes.
Because I'm, I'm wondering if your statistics are getting skewed a little bit, people coming off of there and driving slow toward the traffic light south panel.
Very could be, um, unless, let me get with our traffic officers and see that, know how to do that and see if that's a capability of the system to pull that specifically. But I definitely can look into that for you for sure.
Okay, thank you.
It may, it may be a matter of where you're placing the data collection box itself. So it might be a different answer if we place that box right in Missouri as opposed to placing it down closer to the, you know, to the, uh, to the shopping centers.
Correct. And there, the speed limit, it does reduce coming south on Litchfield Road there too, so that could be, for sure, we can pull those stats for you and.
Well, then you're outside the city and you're outside, it's a lot of the streets.
That's because they comply on that hill.
Right.
Yeah, between Indian School, I mean, Litchfield and Dicer on Camelback, you drive thirty-five. And the other drivers are not friendly.
You're moving slow.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes, that's my fair, go ahead.
Chief Martin, um, the flock alerts, we've got three with a, a registered sex offender. That's the most I've seen in a while. Is that the same person coming in and out of the city or is that multiple, three different people?
Counselor, yes, I believe that is the same vehicle. It is the same vehicle. That gentleman or not, that guy. Take that back. That person is coming in and out of the city, uh, on those three incidents, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
You mind if, you mind if I say a few quick things on Avondale PD, sir?
Absolutely, right here.
Thank you. Um, I can't say enough good things about Avondale PD. I can honestly say this is the third time I've seen these guys today. Um, I see them regularly. There's very few weeks go by when I don't have the officers just come in to see me and let me know things going on in the city. Are we aware of this? Um, I can say with prior agencies we've used, that I never once saw them in that office. And I see Avondale PD literally every week. They're always great to keep in touch with me. They do a fantastic job. The patrol at Missouri, I asked them to do myself because I, as you know, I live that way and I see the car speeding up. As they pass Camelback, they just start speeding up going up that hill. So I asked them to do that patrol there to see if it was true, as far as the car speeding going up that hill. I would also agree with Counselor Brandon Watts on the golf cart issue. I actually saw a golf cart with teenage kids actually driving on Camelback Saturday night. Actually went through the Litchfield intersection, we're heading west. And I just can't imagine putting a golf cart on Camelback. Uh, furthermore, I had a resident actually tell me that he was gonna drive on Camelback because that was his plan to slow traffic down was with his golf cart on Camelback. I just, I can't imagine. Um, one more positive thing to say about Avondale PD. I have a lot of family in town visiting this week. Got a house full of guests and I actually had to take someone out at one AM Saturday night. And when I got back home, I was surprised to see an Avondale officer there actually trying to fix the gate. The gate had stuck and he was actually out there trying to fix the gate himself at one o'clock in the morning. And I thought that was very impressive. He didn't have to do that. And you get Avondale PD does a great job. Thank you, guys. And Chief, uh, Goodyear Fire does a great job as well. I wouldn't even leave you out, sir. Thank you.
All righty.
I can touch on the annual report. Uh, Louizzi said this is my first one doing it, but I'm kind of glad because, uh, the numbers look in the positive direction compared to last year. Obviously, last year was not bad at all. We, officers responded to four thousand seventy-two calls for service in twenty-twenty-three. Two thousand one hundred and forty-seven of those were officer-generated, so which is off. Two thousand one hundred and forty-seven of those were officer generated, so which is officer being proactive out there, which is an increase of fifty-one percent compared to last year. And again, that's us trying to get out there and, you know, more traffic enforcement. Be more visible in the neighborhoods and get out there and just, just work. Again, nineteen, one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five of those calls for us were citizen generated, calling us for whatever it is, whatever call it is, uh, that we responded to compared to last year. Uh, actually, last year, the off, the citizen generator was exactly the same, nineteen hundred and twenty-five calls of service. Um, our officers in this year's last year was down compared to this year, but again, we were up seven recalls of service and that was good because. We know the importance of uh, traffic on Litchfield Road or traffic on Camelback, traffic on the roundabout in the city, be more proactive and get out there and. Get them part of the city, make them sure they'll keep it how they wanted to be. Other than that, everything was, every, every call for service that we've had from twenty twenty-three, you've already told you was down with except of, uh, exception of an accidents. Accidents went up three percent, but it was. Uh, five accidents more this year than it was last year. Which sounds pleasantly surprised with the roundabout going in there.
Roundabout.
Roundabout, yeah, it's all five.
I was nervous to get those numbers out and I saw those, I was happy to come present this. It's been a great year. This doesn't usually happen for Avondale, but for Litchfield Park, it's nice to have, so. Any questions?
Don't see any. Thank you for your hard work and please let the officers directly know that we appreciate the kind of our community. You guys do a great job.
Well, I got worried, but one more thing, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank you for the kind words at the state of the city. Again, I've been the last three that we've had and as by portal biggest, we had to stand outside the, the fire and we're standing in the molly and. We had nothing but uh, positive comments from all the citizens about the council and the presentation of fire PD, so okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, takes us to staff reports, financial report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight I have the January financial report. And I'll start with our city sales tax. January over, last January overall, um, sales are up two percent. Uh, retail sales was also up two percent. Online sales were up seven. Um, restaurant and bars were down slightly, two percent. Utilities are up thirteen, rentals are up thirty-eight, and then we have several categories that make up this other category. We're down fifteen percent. And then year over year, um, total sales tax is up ten percent. Our construction sales tax, um, January over January is down eighty-seven percent and year over year it's down forty-one percent. And I'm happy to answer any questions on the sales tax if there are any.
Questions for council.
Moving on to. Now I have to, there it comes. The general fund finance report. Our general fund revenue is just over um, ten million dollars or at sixty-six percent of our budget estimate. And we're fifty-nine percent through the year, so revenues are performing um, once again very well. Um, our operating expenditures um, by department. Uh, we are right at fifty-eight percent, but I do want to point out um. The debt service for the twenty twenty-three bonds, we did budget eight hundred and fifty thousand, but I. I reduced um, the budget amount to the actual payment. Um, so that is a change that you see from, from last month. So total expenses are just over seven million dollars. Revenue over expenditures are just under three million. Our construction sales tax, our one-time revenue is at four hundred and sixty-four thousand five hundred. And we did receive um, our final payment from Maricopa County Flood Control for the storm drain project at just under one point nine. And we've spent two hundred and sixty-one thousand on capital expenditures. So that's a net of just over two million dollars. And that brings our ending fund balance to thirty-one point two million. I do want to just point out quickly, uh, when Steve was giving his audit report, he mentioned um, the transfers out of the general fund. Of seven point five million and what he's referring to are the debt service payments and all of our capital. So when I report to you monthly, I report it all as one, but on the financial statements, it's reported separately. And so that's what that um, transfer that he is talking about. And the detail for rec and special events is in your packet. I won't go through that unless there's um, any questions. Moving on to our special revenue funds. Our perf revenue is just under three hundred thousand or at fifty-five percent of budget, so it's coming in under budget by about four percent. Um, fortunately, interest income is doing well and that fund has earned um, nearly twenty-eight thousand. And we've spent forty-six thousand five hundred, so that leaves an ending fund balance of one point one million. Our Litchfield Square. Through the end of January, we've spent just over six million and we're at sixty-one percent of that budget. There will be an item later um, to discuss um, moving some budget capacity for this project. And that leaves um, three point four million in the remaining bond funds. Our slids are the streetlight improvement districts. We've collected a hundred, almost a hundred and forty-four thousand in revenue. Our expenses are a hundred and thirty-two thousand.
Just a quick, the, the remaining, the remaining fund balance uh, that's from the bond. Three, three point four million, those are being held by the bonding company, correct?
Correct.
So it's not, it's not in the cash that we've invested.
Correct. It's, it's, I've just actually submitted for our second draw. So I, maybe a better way to say it is, that's, these are the funds that have been encumbered, but the bond funds are being invested.
So so we do have the funds and we're. Arbitrizing?
We, um, Stiefel is investing the bond funds for us, and so they created a, a bond draw schedule based on the investment schedule. So we've been using city cash to cover um, the Aiken Gardner expenses. And so now, as of January is when we can start drawing down that eleven point five million. And we'll, we'll see if. We'll do a comparison of the interest earnings on the bond funds compared to. If they have been invested with us, I think it's going to be pretty close because the LGIB is doing well. It's at five percent, so. Um, the court enhancement fund, um, we've collected just over thirty-six hundred. Expenses are just under fifteen thousand. So that leaves sixty-six thousand seven hundred in that fund. Which brings our um, grand total ending fund balance with all funds, that includes the bonds, at thirty-five point eight million. With thirty-one point two of that in the general fund with twenty-five unassigned, twenty-five million unassigned, but. Just a reminder, that does include three point five million that Maricopa County sent us for Camelback Road improvements. And there will, we'll also have future projects that will impact that amount, such as the Hilltop Restoration and then ten million to complete Litchfield Square. And that concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are.
So I think you, I think it's set up there in twenty twenty-four, her fund, uh, our um. Uh, our one point two million is what we're expecting this year in twenty twenty-four? Well, how, how, what's our, what's our budget per year?
The annual revenue that we are expecting was um, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand. It's going to come in just under that. This was the estimate that. Was provided to us about this time last year. But we have um, uh, we had a beginning fund balance of eight hundred and thirty-five thousand in that fund. So the eight hundred and thirty-five thousand plus the five hundred and thirty that we'll collect is how we end up with the one point one.
And we'll, and we'll spend, I mean, we've got capital projects to. To use all of that, right?
Right. Keith has something um, in the works.
We have been working village in many, many years, spending surf money.
Well, I was going to say, for the first time ever, I think we're going to spend it, right?
That's what, that's what we're supposed to do. I haven't seen it yet.
Right, really? We always come, because I thought this year, I mean, with Camelback parking, parking, you can use anything concrete, basically, right?
I don't think we could do a park, parking lot.
Anything on the road. We have plenty of projects, but we just don't see any of it spent. I, I don't know. It's amazing.
I know, me too. I'm like a fan of her, but it's free, right? Nope, with that in a minute.
We're going to get it spent though. Where is Keith? Up there is Keith. Yes, Keith, we're going to spend it, right? All right. Okay, so are we finished with the plans? Yes. I wasn't sure you were planning.
Yes, I'm done. Thank you.
And we'll go on with the capital improvement projects, which one, Mr. Grandaski was up there. Piece of a lot.
Yes, so I'll tell you, I've spent, we're spending a lot. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Uh, got me excited a little bit ago talking about traffic studies and. Moving traffic around with Avondale PD, so I'm, I'm moving and shaking right now, so. Uh, I, I did want to point out though that we have spent, uh, I think it was about five hundred thousand to resurface Litchfield Road, um, a couple of months back. And then uh, even before that, I think it was about three hundred thousand in all the pavement rebuild that we did. Uh, an ECA Maya tainter and then we're in Vista Verde, so. Trying to spend it, uh, just need to get the products. And I'm waiting for a little bit more money so we can move on from, after we move on from Dicer and Indian School, we'll move into more pavement. So I'm going to start off with the South West Valley Truck Study. We finally got the uh, draft final report. Um, we're able to regurgitate some of the information I know uh, shared with city manager. Uh, we were requested by MAG not to distribute it to any other partner agencies. Or very many staff, that's how we put it, so. Um, they have not shared it with any of the other cities. It was our special request to get an advanced copy of it so we could uh, have our input and review of it. Uh, so I want to give a quick rundown of what we found. So we received it uh, early this month. Uh, so depending where you are on Camelback Road, the daily average traffic is ninety-six hundred vehicles per day in the, in the neighborhood of Bullard Wash. All the way to twenty-four thousand vehicles per day on El Mirage. Uh, so the differences along that two mile stretch depend on what cross streets, whether it's Litchfield, Dicer or subdivision. Uh, of that, there was a range between five hundred and eighty trucks per day. Again, on that side, you have Bullard Wash all the way to about fifteen hundred near El Mirage, and that's on a daily basis. So that's.
El Mirage is fifteen hundred and I guess five eighty.
Five eighty, so what that's telling us is the FedEx trucks, the facilities truly are sending trucks towards the three oh three. Because it's right at that intersection that it would change from this five hundred and eighty to something in the thousands. Do occasionally.
A thousand trucks that are from El Mirage are going either north or, either north or south somewhere.
Yes, and the distribution on that, actually, there's a lot more trucks hitting south on El Mirage that make a decision whether they're turning east or west. And a lot of those fifteen hundred trucks, they have made the determination to turn west. So with that, uh, moving into some of the noise vibration, so fifty decibels is kind of an annoyance level. Uh, those of us who were at the state of the city, we had a measuring device in there right before the mayor started talking, we'd probably be in the low seventies. It's a low to mid seventies is where you start kind of getting uncomfortable with, with uh, the noise levels. The federal highways use sixty-four to sixty-seven decibels when they're evaluating a road, whether a house uh, or subdivision needs noise walls and how tall they are. Uh, so based on that, I can tell you that during the study, uh, data collection, they measured between seventy-three and seventy-nine decibels. Uh, between four AM and seven forty-five, that was, that was the peak section. Uh, majority of that was along the greens and along the other portions right along Litchfield. So either side of Litchfield Road on Camelback received the highest noise. A lot of that had to do with the fact that the intersection makes you slow down or speed up from up and down the hill. Uh, in the same sense, between one AM and three AM, there was some of the quietest times, which was thirty-five to fifty-seven um, decibel, so it's generally quiet for a road like that. With the vibration, I can tell you that seventy-two, it's, it's VDB, it's, it's vibration decibels. Seventy-two is about the annoyance level. Um, so there were a hundred and ninety trucks, truck incidents in one night that exceeded that. So that's a major number. There's not usually more than a couple of dozen on any roadway portion in the valleys, so we have a hundred and ninety in one night, so. There's clearly evidence of noise and vibration effectiveness. Now we have a little bit more teeth to the claims. So in the future conditions, we're going to go from twenty-four thousand vehicle today, vehicles per day to about thirty-two to thirty-five, depending where you are in El Mirage. That increases also from the fifteen hundred trucks per day to twenty-six hundred. This is a twenty forty estimate. This is how they project how loud it's going to get. If the truck restrictions were in place, uh, that number would go down between sixty and seventy-five percent. So of that twenty-six hundred trucks per day in the future, that would take nineteen hundred and fifty trucks off. The remaining uh. Six hundred and fifty are local, the local trucks that make deliveries and they're allowed with our code, so. It's a substantial decrease if the truck ban is able to be in place in the future. So that also means that based on the mapping that was provided, they did a model that kind of went around Camelback and where trucks would be sent. Uh, Glendale, Northern Parkway, of course, uh, Indian School and a portion of whether you're on Thomas or McDowell. Got a, a big brunt of that distribution. So all the roads that are other arterial through streets that are supposed to get more traffic are modeled to have that track. That's a good, uh, that's a good outlook if we can get a truck ban to be in place. Uh, so that's all I have for the South West Truck Study and if there are any questions on that, I can go on to the other projects. Questions?
Mr. Mayor. Name again, Indian School. I mean, Indian School is known through truck road.
So, uh, Vice Mayor, I, I pointed that out to the study team. Uh, there is a whole section of the report and I'm, I'm flabbergasted this was included, but. There, there was an entire section of the report that precluded other agencies' truck bans in their model. That was weird. I brought their attention almost every meeting we had because every time I looked at the draft models, they were showing Indian School. Having a big surplus of trucks in the model and it showed Camelback's truck band. And I pointed out, I mean, the signs are right here as you enter, you know, on both sides. Cervel Avenue is also has a truck band, existing truck band. There's other portions of, where depending where on the cow and. For whatever reason, the, the MAG design team was instructed to preclude adjacent agents and truck bands on their existing streets. I do not know the answer.
Thank you.
Quick rundown of some of the CIP projects, Camelback Parking Lot. Uh, we have a revised layout of the portion of the graphics included in the state of the city. Uh, we're getting uh, the engineering, the on-site engineers are finalizing that layout. They're kind of putting some finishing touches on it so they can also start looking at the rough order magnitude for cost. Uh, right now, the estimate uh, in the CIP we have is, I think, two hundred and eighty thousand. Um, and the previous design where we had the on, on park parking lot was in the neighborhood of four hundred and fifty thousand, so now that we've moved it to an on-street diagonal. Will be in the neighborhood of that two hundred thousand, two hundred and eight thousand dollar range, so I think our budgets are going to line up pretty well. Uh, Camelback Park perimeter wall and turn lane is also being revised. Uh, the, the design plans are detailing out where the portions of the view fence are versus the solid fence. Uh, we also have on both of these projects, we're going to uh, issue a, a survey and um, let the folks look at some of the options. Based on last public meeting, that was something that was requested, so we'll put some graphics in the survey and let people. For lane speed humps, uh, we, well, we're finally took receipt of the uh, of the speed bumps that we're going to replace the previous asphalt. And we'll be putting those in here in the next probably couple of weeks or so. Uh, Dicer Road, Indian School Road reconstruction, uh, I just received word from the city of Avondale that the plans are going to be okay to proceed. And once we're done, uh, we're going to bid it. They'll issue a permit. Uh, hoping to get that from McDowell here pretty soon because I have a really skinny strip of annex that kind of generally goes through the um. Planter area by the circle K, so they have to approve. And that sometimes doesn't go very fast.
Where, exactly, what are the boundaries of what we're going to be replaced?
So the, the eastern boundary will be that very first concrete entrance, uh, just east of the s- circle K. On the east side, and then they'll extend out to the second through lane. Where we'll replace the asphalt just north. Where we'll replace the asphalt just north of the Monument Line, but north of the center of Indian School. We'll go out to the, ju- almost close to the center of the intersection of Dicard and Indian School. And it extends north along the curb line of the east side of the median. And then that'll go all the way north to, uh, the northernmost parking lot of the bank. All the way to, and then all the asphalt in between. The curb along the Circle K and in front of the portion of McDonald's. The new ramp at the intersection, and then all the, uh, curb, uh, the south side of the Circle K. A large portion of that, my first concrete driveway is also to be repaired because it's cracked, it's keaved. And, uh, the subgrade, this entire has bad subgrades, so everything's been moving for decades. We're gonna tear it all out and redo the ABC.
When we get done, we're gonna end up with that intersection being okay from. East to west, north, south, in the intersection, intersection itself, or are we gonna end up with? A quarter of the intersection being really nice, because we just got replaced, and three quarters of it being really terrible, so.
I think it'll be somewhere in between, Mr. Mayor, because the south side is in Avondale's jurisdiction, and they have done, they didn't overlay, I think. Four or five years ago, and I don't know if they have a slurry overlay. The northwest quadrant is something that I've been looking at, is probably a portion that will do some rehab on with a slurry or a microseal. I don't think it has a subgrade problem or an asphalt problem, so I think a slurry or a microseal will take care of that portion. So everything in the city limits is gonna be in good shape, once we get done with it.
We talked to Avondale Hall about trying to make bits of a whole intersection, actually, it's decent.
That's a good question, Mr. Mayor. I asked the City of Avondale that question, they, uh, didn't directly answer, but they alluded to the fact that two different developers are coming in. Uh, so that there's a, we anticipate a car wash coming in on the southwest corner by the church. And there is currently under construction, the apartment complex in front of the treatment plant area. They have, uh, insinuated that they're gonna be doing some roadway half-street improvements as part of their developments. And that they wouldn't commit CIP funds to that until that's all settled. So we didn't, we wouldn't have a commitment at this time from the city of Avondale.
Can I ask one quick, I know you probably said it, and this is glossed over. Uh, when is our, when are we anticipating starting all this?
The, uh, Dicard Road, Indian School reconstructed project was in the final stage of the plans, I expect to get them in, in the next couple of weeks to get the sealed set. Once we get, uh, revised estimate from the engineer, we'll determine whether we can have a contractor come off of the One GPA or the Mojave Co-op. Or put it out to bid. And once, if we can do the, the One GPA or Mojave Co-op that saves us a month, because we don't have to do the bid process and the contract negotiations. Uh, however, if we do have some issues, maybe go through city training, they advise us that it has to be bid and we can't take it off the, any of the co-ops, then. We'll have to go that route, which will add a little more time to it. So I would anticipate going to construction, uh, either May or June.
Any other questions? Alright.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere. We're gonna go to the contamination, flu update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Not a lot of movement, uh, the PGA North Superfund Site. The, uh, EPA did make a request of all the member agencies, all the adjacent cities and the county to. Provide, uh, permission for testing results for all their drinking water wells. Uh, we obviously don't have a drink water well, we have a lake well, and we've already provided our testing results to both Luke and to PGA, so. It doesn't really affect us, but I'm sure you all know that, you know, City of Goodyear, Liberty, even in the nearby areas of Avondale. They all have drink water wells in the, in the dozens, if not over a hundred in some locations, so. They're making requests for those tr- well results, um, and to access those wells to test for PFAS in the PGA. North and south, so that is something that's actually kind of newer in those, in the superfund site, they haven't been tested for PFAS. Uh, we are finding ourselves in the smack dab in the middle of two different contamination zones that have a relation with PFAS, so. We're waiting to see how that ends up. So we've, we have given permission for them to retest the, the lake well, so we'll see if they want to take advantage of that. Other than that, no other major changes on PGA North. As far as Luke Air Force Base coordination, we, uh, legal and, and engineering finalized the.
Plan.
Going back to the Department of Defense for the agreement. Uh, it seemed that the Department of Defense was very, very non-receptive to calling anything permit. Uh, they can't have a permit, they can't have a permit document, a license of some kind granted by a municipality, uh, because of the Circle Act. So they have let us kind of dance around that with, uh, required coordination, so they'll come to us. Instead of them just showing up one day in the middle of Scout Park, enjoying a mo- uh, monitoring well, which I was worried about. They're actually gonna ask us if it's okay, and then we can coordinate where to put it. And I'm putting that in simplified terms, because they have been a little aggressive at choosing the location and wanting to just get out there and drill. So we'll be able to call the brakes and put it into the agreement, and hopefully this last one that was just recently sent. Will work out for everybody, and we can have it on March, Council General, approval.
Good.
And that is all I have on this contamination case.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Special projects upstate, update?
Mayor, members of council, a few updates on Litchfield Square. Uh, Village Parkway, that's the northern roadway in the square. That'll provide the connection. Thank you, Maria, for putting up the exhibit. Village Parkway is south of lots one through four. And eventually we'll have that complete connection between Litchfield Road on the west. And then, uh, you can see the roundabout, and then all the way over east to the, uh, Old Litchfield Road. The final road section adjacent to the church at Litchfield Park is near completion. If you go out there and look, I've been out looking at that basically every day the last few weeks. It's pretty much done, so there's new on-street parking on both the north and south sides of Village Parkway. We're meeting with the church on a regular basis. I know Easter's coming up late, uh, March. They're anxious to get the project done, uh, in front of church, so we're, um, actually meeting with them again tomorrow afternoon. The paper crosswalks and landscaping in this area is almost complete as well. Um, moving on to Old Litchfield Road, um, modifications to the landscape median right at Village Parkway. Started this week, you might have seen, uh, our Aiken Gardner crews and their subcontractors in the middle of the roadway. Uh, Keith approved a traffic control plan to keep our, uh, citizens safe through that portion of. Old Litchfield Road. The mailbox in the landscape median I mentioned before, that was temporarily removed. It will be replaced, it'll be ADA accessible per the postal service requirements. Along the way, the three-way stop sign was completed over on Old Litchfield Road and Honeysuckle. Be, leading up to that, um, we did get approval from the Wigwam. There are some, uh, curbs on the east side of Old Litchfield Road. At the three-legged portion of that intersection where we needed to get their blessing, because the, um, their property runs up to about the curb line. So the, the stop sign has been in place now since about the first part of February. And in my travels and from what I've heard from some of, uh, mayor and council, as well as some of the, the, some of our residents, it's for the most part been capable. Litchfield Square Park, uh, most of the grading drainage work was complete. We were hoping to have the sod installation starting this week. I got a report from Aiken Gardner that that's been moved back to March seventh. Uh, so that's coming up, I believe, two weeks from tomorrow. Um, we should, uh, start seeing sod installed in the park. Uh, the bathroom, uh, restroom building, that would be, um, right at the, it's lot eight, is, uh. This is from the final flat for Litchfield Square, so the primary bathroom building will be right at the northwest corner of the park. Which geographically would be the southeast corner of Village Parkway and, uh, Liloma Avenue, which will be a new street, new to the square. Honeysuckle, um, I mentioned to council before. Uh, it's pretty much completed between Old Litchfield Road and Desmond Avenue, in front of the shops and restaurants, the Tea House. Uh, Aiken Gardner's been working on the section, Honeysuckle immediately north of City Hall, when you visit our offices. Um, if you look over there, most of the paving work, concrete work is done, so they're making good progress there. And then the new street, that would be, um, North-South Street, Liloma Avenue, um. Basically between lots eight and nine, and then lots thirteen and eleven. That roadway has been cut, and, uh, if you go out there, the, um, the grading work has, has been underway. It was a little bit of a delay, because on lot twelve, you might remember that last November, council approved a easement to Cox. Uh, Communications, and, uh, they needed to move, Cox needed to move a pedestal into that easement. On the east side of lot twelve, that work is almost complete. Uh, Keith's been inspecting that, uh, there's some cleanup work. If you look closely, you'll see the pedestal. Has been relocated outside of the right-of-way for Liloma Avenue. Matthew mentioned in his annual report, uh, the old scale, um, is being demolished immediately away from City Hall. Um, we've been looking at that, Brian Bertucci, our building official, has been keeping an eye on that as well, so that, um, will be removed. And when the improvements are moved to Liloma, it'll be basically replaced with a wide landscape buffer. White sidewalks, and then on-street parking would move, that'd be some west sides of Liloma, just west of, uh, City Hall. Then finally, the perimeter wall phase six, this is the, um, wall that will be constructed, uh, adjacent to the three lots that, um, up by. The north part of, uh, Litchfield Square, those three lots are front on the Lutana. Um, that project finally got put on, um. My back burner, just because of some of the other things we were trying to get accomplished. The plans are designed for that wall to be continuation of the, uh, wall that Woody worked, worked on about a year ago. On Litchfield Road, so we're gonna carry that wall, um, east of, um, Litchfield Road. Basically, um, it's a little bit off the map, but, uh, north of the underpass for the Gulf Per- um, path, so we're gonna extend that. Uh, consistent perimeter theme wall that you'll see elsewhere in Litchfield Park. Across those three lots, the, the, the fence that's there now, uh, adjacent to the three residents, um, it's, it's uneven, it's inconsistent design. So we'll have a nice look to finish off that part of the square, so. Uh, as I mentioned, design plans are pretty much completed for that, and we hope to put that project out to bid. For the next few months, and, um, probably not, uh, start construction until the next fiscal year, but. We are making progress and trying to keep the neighbors, those three households informed, so. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Will the mailbox be returned to its, its, uh, original spot, or will it be moved?
Mayor, council member, it's gonna be moved a little bit, um, I believe, south of where it was.
Okay.
And the, the nuance on, not to get in all the, the details with the United States Postal Service, but. Anytime a mailbox has to be removed or relocated, they want ADA accessible. For both vehicles, as well as somebody that might wanna, uh, either roll up, uh, on a bicycle, pedestrian. Or in a wheelchair, so that it, it is ADA accessible, so. Been working with Aiken Gardner and, uh, the postal service to, to get that design completed, Keith's been reviewing it. And it'll be roughly in that same location, but it'll look just a little bit different.
And then my second question is, I can't believe we never had an accident at that three-way stop, because it is really, it works. And I can't believe how many people are crossing, or else I just didn't see them before. Holy moly, I swear, every time I stop, someone crosses, I'm like, well, there you go, so it's been.
Or somebody saw you and they stopped.
Yeah, well, I drove the speed limit there. But anyway, uh, yeah, it's awesome. I, I think Peter Mahoney would say thank you to everybody as well, because. No, no, he did, he did, anyway.
The, uh, the short section wall that we're gonna put in on the street lots.
Yes.
We need to take a look and see what that won't cost per foot, and see if it's dramatically higher, because it's such a small run. And if it is, then, you know, if we're really gonna be doing a wall on Camelback and the park, you know, not that much in the future. It would make sense that we need to see how much extra cost there is involved, that it might go insane by waiting and doing it with the Camelback.
We will certainly look at that, Mayor.
Any other questions?
So, a couple of informational questions. So when, in September, when the fences come down and the roadway becomes usable, um, between ten and eleven there, there's no point of egress on. I guess that's Honeysuckle going on the Litchfield Road, correct? So that's a dead end right there?
Councilman James, in, in GMP six, we actually decided not to build that portion of road. Between that roundabout, you see right there between eleven and thirteen?
Yeah.
Originally, there was gonna be a connecting road there. We actually eliminated that portion of the road to save money on GMP six.
Okay.
So that portion will not be built. A future developer could build it if they chose to, but there will be no road there, sir.
So that, so, yeah, so between eleven and ten right there, there's no road?
That's correct.
So just a roundabout, and there's a north and a south right there?
That's correct.
And then the egress onto Wigwam, and then there's an egress out to Old Litchfield, and then what about where lot three is? Does that road stop there, or are they gonna continue all the way through to Scout?
No, sir, no, sir, it will not continue up to Liloma.
So that's, that's, you can't go north coming out of that?
There will be, there's a road there on to the right of side four, sir, there alongside Scout Lodge. Eventually, I would tell you, there'll probably be a parking garage where Scout Lodge is, I think in the future there will be. But no, sir, to the left there, that road will not connect, because we didn't want to dump traffic into their essential neighborhoods, and that's what it would have done, sir. The main thoroughfare, of course, would be Village Parkway.
So Honeysuckle will end, it will be a dead end, I mean.
Yes, ma'am. It would dead end at that roundabout there, between eleven and thirteen.
Oh, oh, gosh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So the parking spots will be gone as well, right?
And we're, the ones, the ones east of, the ones east to the west of the roundabout, huh?
That's correct.
Just a funny story for you. Aiken Gardner had a section of the fence down one day, for some reason or another. And one of our residents on a bicycle decided to take a quick tour through and see how beautiful everything was looking. And came back to find the fence closed back up. He was able to call his wife, who came in a pickup truck and was able to lift the bicycle over the fence, and then he climbed over as well, sheepishly. Interested in when it was gonna be legally open, but.
Some visual learners, just so I understand. You're gonna be able to come in, use this roundabout, but you can't, wrong finger, can't go that way, come this way, can't go that way, go this way. Well, down bolt this way, and you go this way, but you can't go that way. Right, is that right?
For the most part, that was true, sir. The roundabout there that's just southwest of the church, there will be parking up there just above, before your hand is, sir, there'll be parking in that area. So, I gotta think about this, so we have it, so, uh, John or Keith, tell me if I'm wrong, so a fire, a fire truck can come in that way. But traffic can't go out on the fairway, correct?
Yes, the, the parking lot where, right over Scout Lodge, that's southbound, in that home's cars. Comes into that parking lot, that will deal with the third project for the parking garage, and then emergency vehicles also. But nobody's going north, eggs off.
Because Scout Lodge will be a parking lot, there ultimately, right? Where Scout Lodge is, is gonna be a parking lot, a parking garage?
Yes, ma'am, I think, I think it'll probably eventually be a parking garage, based on need, obviously, if we turn out to need.
But it, but you can only park there and come back out this way, you can't go.
We don't, we don't want people parking going into the area.
And also, where Village comes into Old Litchfield, you will not be able to turn left. Because we didn't want commercial traffic dumping, and they were still be forced to go south.
So they'll come down and have to now do a U-turn at the three-way stop, right?
Well.
Like, I'm, if I'm going home, you and I are going?
You hopefully go back out Village Parkway.
Yes, I think if you're coming off of Village Parkway and you wanna go to the Wigwam, you're gonna, you're gonna have to go down the roundabout, come down, and then go to Honeysuckle and up.
Yeah, yeah. Or the wrong way. I'm ride by bike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought it was kind of interesting over the, this past weekend where they had this fine Indian art at the, at the hotel. And there were a lot of vehicles parked on lots five, six and seven. Going forward, what's the Wigwam going to do for that kind of parking? I, I don't know whether that's an issue that you even want to address, but that's, that is something that we, we need to think about.
Do you mind if I touch on this one, John?
Please.
Oh, Councilman, that's a great question. And we've had this discussion many times with our own events because when Tricia's large events are going, they use that lot too. And of course, that lot will eventually go away.
Yeah.
Um, so one thing we've discussed possibly for our events is doing a lease agreement with the high school where people could park at Millennium and walk down for events and we could bus people down for events. Another option would be parking people at Jackie Robinson there at the parking lot there. Same thing with busing people. But it will most definitely be an issue. And of course, we don't want to build big parking lots or big parking garages for seven weekends a year.
All right.
But trying to find out where they can go temporarily. It will be interesting at best. And the Wigwam is underparked today, let alone when they're having a major event.
Yeah.
I don't feel like that's the best answer, but it is a good question.
Me too. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Matthew, I've been asked by citizens, where are the vendors going to park their RVs and trailers during our events? If we develop this land?
Some of them, sir, would have the option of parking them at Jackie Robinson, the big parking lot there, if people comfortable there.
Where?
At Jackie Robinson. That's the most logical one. And also there is some parking available, but the school for RVs as well isn't a question. And we didn't, you may remember, we put that in the SRO agreement that we could use the school parking lots for our large events, things like that as well. Granted, it may not be enough.
And then there also may be some, once we get the parking lots figured out, that, that, that hillside.
And then we as a city provide. So then we as a city provide shuttles from Jackie Robinson for the vendors or how does that go?
Yes, ma'am. That, that would be one way of doing it. We could certainly have them on like a loading, unloading zone and then they have to park somewhere else. But you also have to think about the event patrons. Some years ago, sir, when Woody was still here, he did a count one of the event weekend. And I'm fairly sure Tricia may remember better than I do, but I think there were 1,200 cars parked in the city lots that weekend.
Yeah.
Those lots are going to go away.
Yeah.
So again, I think at, at that point, we come back looking like at Millennium, at busting people from Millennium or from Jackie Robinson as well. The issue there is people are creatures of habit. They will want to walk the closest, the shortest distance they can. So we've got to keep them from flooding our streets.
We've got fifteen acres around the corner there.
Yeah. For rent, for rental.
Tom, why don't you call and talk to them?
Right.
Thank you. We appreciate the report. You have the magistrate report in your packet, which brings us to the consent, the consent agenda, item nine, A through F, I believe. Is there anyone on the council who would like to take anything off of the consent agenda?
E and F.
E and F, okay. Is there anyone else who would like to take anything off the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to adopt consent agenda items nine, A through D? Although the favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, items nine, A through D are approved. Item nine, E, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I, I don't know if you can go in detail. My opinion from the last meeting hasn't changed. If this is bad policy, E and F, so in ten minutes.
Okay. So is there anyone who wishes to discuss E and F further? If not, is there a motion to adopt item nine, E, which is an amendment related to personal policy to give this winter closure a protocol on there?
So, a motion?
Yeah, we need to have a motion to adopt, to adopt the Resolution twenty-three dash five-five-nine. This provides for the winter, the winter closure for a one-year trial period.
So move.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Although in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion is adopted. Next item is to, is there a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-three dash five-sixty, which relates to overtime compensation during this winter closure period again for a one-year trial period?
So move.
Second.
Any, any discussion on this item? Although in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion accepted. That takes us to item ten, regular business agenda. Ms. Rock, you have the presentation on the call of election. I think we need to call.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The information is in your packet. This resolution will move up the August sixth primary date to July thirtieth this year.
The one, the one.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to adopt?
Second. Any discussion?
I have a question. And I don't know the answer to this. I guess we have to call the city or the state elections. It's like, how soon prior to that do we get your mail-in ballot? You know how many people are gone in July? You know, but it's not.
Everyone's going to move up a week.
Right. I just, I'm just wondering. I, I'd like to know the answer to that, but I'll contact the right source.
Any further discussion on the motion to adopt Resolution twenty-four dash five-sixty-five? Although in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item D, appointment of resigned view board member, removing, removing Councilman Romack and replacing him with Councilmember James.
Motion to approve.
Any discussions? Although in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Did you say aye, Councilman James?
Just more meetings, fine.
All right. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Next item is adoption ordinance twenty-four dash two-seventy-nine related zoning code amendments. Is there a presentation beyond what we did last, at the last meeting?
I'll be very brief, ma'am.
Okay. You don't have to be brief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. Occasionally we'll come forward and bring either city code or zoning code amendments to P and Z council. This is one where it's, it's more of a housekeeping measure. We introduced the ordinance to you last month. There was a little bit of discussion on the packet for last month on section twenty-nine point eleven regarding side yard parking next to view fences. In discussing that, that's portion of the ordinance with Matthew, with Austin and with Joe, we decided just to take that out. It's section twenty-nine point eleven. It is not in your ordinance tonight for adoption. We just, there was too much confusion with it. We thought it was a very isolated situation where we do have side yard view fences in Litchfield Park. We just felt it was too much of a castle's not the right word. So we just removed that. So the ordinance that were suggesting to be adopted tonight, the only change between January and February was removing that one section twenty-nine point eleven.
Motion to adopt twenty-four dash two-seven-nine.
Is your second? Any further discussion? Although in favor of adopting ordinance twenty-four dash two-seven-nine, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Next item is capital improvement budget adjustments for fiscal year twenty-two-four. Ms. Peter.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. During the fiscal year twenty-four budget process, staff had estimated the total cost for Litchfield Square for fiscal year twenty-four at nine million, nine hundred and fifty thousand. Nine point two million was estimated for GMP five and seven hundred and fifty thousand was estimated for design and engineering. It was also estimated at that time, GMP six wouldn't start until fiscal year twenty-five. However, the project timeline has moved up about five months. So seven point five million of the project costs have been moved from fiscal year twenty-five to twenty-four. So it's not a request to spend more money on the project, but it's to take authorized budget capacity from the other capital fund to the Litchfield Square Fund, which that would take seven million, four hundred and seventy thousand and move to the Litchfield Square capital. So that would make the total Litchfield Square capital. And that would leave two million, six hundred and thirty thousand for other city capital.
Motion to approve the budget adjustments?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the budget adjustment? Although in favor of, of, of making the budget adjustment as presented, can you think about it saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? We're going to take that pop as an aye. No worries. Okay, we do have a need for an executive session, is that understanding correct? Under I O. Item eleven, B. So is there motion to go to executive session on item eleven, B?
So move.
Although in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? They're going on the executive session on eleven, B. And when they get out of executive session, when you know for the business connected, you're welcome to stay and listen to us adjourn if you wish. But that's a, you guys live outside.
Okay.
Okay, any opposed for adjournment? Although in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? They are adjourned.
So you.